You know, it's always in the water. There's no way to remove what's coming to us. We could try to mitigate that much.
Well, I just don't want.
Set that in committee. Set that in committee.
You got it.
July? All right. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I would like to convene Washington County Public Works Committee for this Tuesday, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. If that's motion to accept the minutes from November twenty sixth.
Yes, sir.
Second, Dave, any discussion on that? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. So with that, we've got our reports to our district support. And I know there was a conversation prior to us convening me might be helpful for the whole committee to hear that, but.
Sure, yeah. I'll start with the agenda first. First item is the P C A R P award. What those acronyms mean, it's our process control administration building. RFP is a request for proposal. So what we did is we have the project. We put it out to request for proposals for engineering services. We, the sewer commissioners and I reviewed the RFP submissions. We scored them with our scoring criteria and we conducted discussions with three engineering firms to discuss alternative methods and concepts. After scoring and discussions, we would like to award to Smozo Dodian Associates for the P C A RFP. So they submitted a percentage based of the total overall projects. And Smozo Dodian Associates is ten percent of the total overall project as well. The engineering portion will cost us. That's the other two firms are ten percent, thirteen percent. So they're all.
What is the estimated cost of this project?
The project is three point nine nine million right now. That could change by time we go to construction, for better or for worse. But that's the the process control administration building and we have qualified for full zero percent financing on that, which is great.
And has the board of commissioners proved this?
Yes.
Got moved by Dan. Second, Jay. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Kevin, do you know the anticipated rollout time of the project because we'd want to get the, I imagine the money through E F D.
Yes, this year will be all design. I don't, I could get an estimated amount of how much we will cost this year. But if you're asking it next year, we'll probably go into construction where we try to get the full.
Well, before we borrow any E F C, we need a binding resolution. So I want to make sure that we don't fall backwards in that process.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Al.
Now, can I follow up on that?
Yes, sir.
On, in other words, you're going to borrow the money to do this project, right?
Yes.
And does the county, are they? Are we, are, is the county borrowing for them or are they borrowing and they're just going and using our bank bond?
We borrow it for them. Their adware and pays their debt service.
Right. So that's how it is. So we actually, well, this eventually have to come to a full board for a vote to borrow, right?
Yes, there'll be a, there'll be a seeker in the bonding resolution for the project.
So this actually was the first step headed down that road to borrow the money?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, sometimes you don't realize when you say yes, which you're saying yes. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Very well. Any other questions about process on this one? Oh, you, that's a good question. Yes, sir.
The sewer one rehab project, National Water Main Cleaning Company change order number two. This is a sense of formality change order. What happened was we did a change order number one in November. When we did that change order, we missed one number. It was for official thirty five hundred dollars. Since that first change order in November, we were able to save a little bit of money. So what we are looking for now is to approve another sixteen hundred dollars in a change order. This is the sewer one rehab project that we did a lot of slip lining and manhole rehabilitation. The project was originally estimated at one point five million and now that we're at the end, I could tell you. We are spending approximately five hundred and twenty thousand and one hundred and forty seven dollars. So we pretty much spent a third of what we originally thought the project would cost. And add the five hundred and twenty thousand, you need a change order for our sixteen hundred dollars just to line up the paperwork.
Dave, who's it? Second. Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions?
There's something like I have to go to the commissioners first, first comes here.
And that was doesn't have to, but I usually do it. This one, thank you.
Al, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to, just for clarity, you're just, he just needs you to authorize the change order. There's no, you won't need to move with the finance or anything. There's no budgetary needed on the money. So I think there's enough budget in place. We just need the blessing of the committee for the change.
Right, I understand. We're still under budget.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for being under budget. Any other question?
And one more thing I'd like to add, we also are receiving a grant out of that five hundred and twenty thousand. We're not sure of the total because it's weird how we broke it up, but we're also going to get up to a hundred thousand dollar grant off of that five twenty.
And does that come back to committee for approval when you accept grants or something? So that'll, we'll hear about it when you get it, right?
Once there's, once there's an award, you'll have an additional action, additional actions.
That we, I think that's already, those steps, it's already been awarded. We accepted it. It's just how much we end up getting refunded is the question now.
Thank you for saving extra dollars.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carry. Other business, sir?
I'm open to whatever question you have.
Many? Sir? Oh, go ahead, Dave.
So, in the governor's budget, there was an allocation made for a hundred million dollars for counties that have lost prisons. We will be eligible for that. A lot of, a lot of that was done with N I S A C. Now, said N I S A C helped us lobby for it with the governor and the budget director. So how it's going to shake out, we don't know. We don't know how much we imply for, what the process is. We will find that out, but it is good news that they did take recognition. There is an economic impact, especially to Washington County.
Is that just presence of the last year, couple, ten years, you know?
I don't know more about it. It's very similar.
It cares how many counties that's going to be in.
Any other questions, sir? Sir, thank you very much.
Next.
Yeah. See, he's warmed up. Kevin got it all warmed up. Committee ready to talk.
We still hold fire. For the rule. Good morning.
Morning.
See what we have to say. We have. First, we have the list to declare surplus. Hopefully Dan likes the mileage this time.
It's getting better.
Well, I don't know. I looked at it. Holy cow, look at that second.
Second one is the wealth truck. It's not something you can take to.
Well, there you go. You just pointed. I feel a lot better right now. Move to declare the surplus.
Thank you, Dan. In seconds. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
So when we are replacing trucks this year, one of the ones that we're replacing is a horse that has a hopper sander on the back of it. So we use it to haul the lowway around in the summer and plow in the winter. So it's being replaced with a plow truck. So we would like to declare surplus the hopper sander. As you may or may not know, we have a list of town municipalities that we can offer it to. So I wanted to ask if you wanted to do that. There are, we have been working with some, a town in Saratoga County for brining and they would be interested in trying out this hopper sander. So if you want me to put it on the list for municipalities, then I can, or if you want me to just send it out to the regular option, I can do that.
In the, in the past, I know we've offered up to our municipalities first.
Right. But now is this something new going outside the county, another county?
No, we've been to, we saw trucks since.
Oh, through the municipality advertising. I remember when we did that.
Do everybody at one time? Do they give priority to any Washington County ones? Like, let's move it.
Yep. Do that.
With municipalities first.
The second? Dave? Dave, a second. Discussion, any other, any other discussion? Sam?
I just have a question. It may not be comfortable. What, what does that actually mean? The, another working in Saratoga County on, on the brining, or Saratoga Town on the brining?
So Jimmy is a bit of an expert on brining and he's been trying to spread his wealth of knowledge to counties and towns around our area and they are very interested in this.
So that doesn't mean writing their roads, you're writing our roads?
Oh, no, no, no. Just.
Just clarification. I was just here with it, with it.
Yep, just working closely to get everybody, find out on the same page if you can.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carry. Thank you.
All right. Let's see what we have. Next, we applied for and received a grant through D E C. It's a water quality improvement grant. It is, the grant is for two hundred and forty nine thousand and forty dollars. The match is additional to that sixty two thousand, two hundred and sixty county dollars for a total of three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. And this is, we put in to buy a grind making system, storage, spreading trackers and different kinds of flowers to try out. So, like Al said with the last, we need to accept the grant and make a budget amendment.
I'm sure this can cost us again.
What's on the except? Lance? Well, hold the canvas on everybody else for a second. Thank you, Jay. Second. Any other discussion?
Is this in your budget, the sixty thou?
We're gonna take it. We cannot budget for grants.
No, I know. Have you got money in there to do it or is there something we're going to add to your budget?
This will be added to the budget through the fund amendments. If we could budget for it, but we're not allowed to budget for it.
Jay?
Is this going to get county pretty well covered as far as grind making and everything else?
Yeah, this is a huge step forward.
I mean, I know we've purchased equipment, purchased equipment. I was just wondering if we're, we're getting about it where we can be. Yeah.
Yep.
How many units will this three eleven buy, Kevin?
So it's, what we put in for is another grinder, some storage units. The new storage units that they require when you're purchasing these now are double walled. So they're much more, much more expensive than the ones we have been getting. The trackers so that we can watch how much we're tracking as much. We've wanted those for a long time. But we had, that's our main goal for this grant was the trackers, but you can only use twenty percent of the total project cost towards these salt tracking devices. So we also wanted to try a new kind of segment. Well, we're pretty happy with the double blades, but there are other options out there that this allows to try out.
That's it.
So under that, the double cycles, those are new, those weren't here before. So the ones that we have before, is that just going to, is it going to be a drop dead data load? Or just going to cross it out as a, where, you know?
At this point, we don't have a drop in there basing now. In fact, I think they're still letting us buy them, but not with this one.
Gotcha.
So I'm sure the preference is going to be like, they're significantly more expensive.
Just like our in-ground gas tanks. Any other questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carry.
Put the amendment of finance to.
Move the finance.
We have to move that on finance. Thank you. Motion to finance. Jay, was that a part of your, okay. That was part of your second, Lance?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That we did there?
Good.
Okay.
Next up, I wanted to tell you about a change that we're making to our approved carpool purchase. We budgeted for four patrol cars, but we are going to replace one of the patrol cars with a pickup. Sorry, it's a budget control thing.
I think that's wrong, right? We have to.
The committee just has to bless the budget.
Is it a budget change?
It's a change to her presented plan. So she has to bring it to committee.
Okay.
Because when Brian does it, he can only buy what was.
Initial purchase or approval was for S C V, right?
It was for the, yeah, yeah, S C V.
Dave, you need a second again?
I was going to make a motion ahead in the shot.
Oh, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Everyone knows what this says?
No. It saves millions. Well, a little bit. We're getting a pickup truck instead of a pro car.
Yes.
Why do you, what do you, what reason do you need a pickup for?
So the sheriff, if you remember, received a grant to get a wheeler and a trailer.
Yeah.
For off-road use.
Okay.
Well, Durango, the trailer, the configuration of the trailer and the wheeler, the Durango, it gets that tow capacity right up against the tow capacity of the Durango. So the sheriff would like to go with a pickup truck that has sufficient tow capacity. He needs to load it.
Pickup truck is three times the capacity to tow.
Yeah, the, oh, I know. Also, the sheriff said there are situations where they need to load stuff in and they, they won't, yeah, they won't load in as you be. That's all. I mean, I just wanted to understand why we're doing this.
Yep.
That's.
Do you want to share the?
No, you, you've answered the question. I'll just make you repeat all the answers. I just wanted to know why you're going from a patrol car to a pickup truck and they just explained it. So I'm happy.
Perfect.
Any other, any other questions? Well, that's, that's good point. Cross that bridge, yes.
It's not a crew cab. It's, it's just going to be a.
Oh, yeah.
It is a crew cab.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carry.
And that's cheaper, a group cab pickup is cheaper than the numbers were a little bit deeper, weren't they?
No. Virtually the same.
Is it a half ton group cab? Pickup or a three quarter?
Three quarters.
Well, that will equate me, anyway.
It'll be able to tow the Durango out of the ditch. Ed, what else you got?
So one thing that's not on here is we put out mini bid and they came back for some of our carpool purchases. So we would like to award a mini bid for one Durango control car, K nine control car, two false Dodge B B A Joe. Something telling you, did you go on the zoning maybe? Yeah. Well, anyway. For fifty six thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars and eighty five cents. So that was part of our budget. We budgeted for one, oh, K nine. Yep, one K nine control. That's what this one is.
Hey.
That'd be wire the K nine if it's so much more than just regular Durango and just for the preparation for the dog.
Sheriff, you don't answer that?
Yeah, it does the, you put the inserts in for the, to separate the dog.
Yeah.
The rear passenger so they hit somewhere. And the dog isn't just good. So it'll back with somebody.
You think the dog got to rag with him sometimes? Yeah, but that, that's not example. Can we put the inserts in for less than nine thousand?
Wait, nine thousand? Where?
I think, is that almost nine thousand dollar difference?
No, the investigator doesn't have the same, quite the same setup as patrol, correct?
Yeah, they're pretty basic. They don't have a divider to handle more people. But the reason that that's, that we have to get another unit for the K nine is because the current car is a four and it's a little transfer to a Dodge. So we can't get escorts anymore. Our houses are seventy thousand dollars. So this, this K nine car has to have a full new.
Interior.
Yeah, not a, not a cave, whatever they call it. It goes in the back to separate pens. It's installed by them. So rather than, we'd have to pay to have it just here. It's a big unit, you know, it's a whole head circuit. It goes into the backseat. As I said, it has a separate rear passenger and a dog.
Do those units have the automatic door lock on release so the dog can exit the vehicle?
Yeah, it definitely has it. They got its belt. It'll open the door.
Works great.
It's a little more expensive than a doggy door.
It is.
It also has a heat sensor. So if something happens to the air conditioning, it'll automatically pop the door too.
Nice.
If you're comparing the patrol to the K nine and the difference in cost, the budget for the patrols was fifty seven thousand five hundred. So if you're, if that's what you're thinking, then.
Well, I would just, they're both Durangos. And so that's when I looked at it, you've got forty seven thousand for one versus fifty six for.
So the K nine control is more than a regular patrol. We don't have any bids out for the regular patrol department yet. This one's an investigator that's up next. So we have to do these individually or do they all as approved? Okay.
Dave's moving it. Lance is second. Sue has a question, discussion.
That's right. On the K nine, how many, how many rehab vehicles do we have for caters? I mean, how many dogs do we have?
Six.
Four.
We have four dogs.
We have lots of.
Oh.
Two one K nine? We have four batches.
Yes.
That triples your capability in the car. That's all.
You have more than one. You can have more than one.
Yeah, but if you see all the movies, you always have the dog sitting in the front seat.
Those are the emotional support dogs.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Try to teach him to drive in, but I didn't.
Hey, they, if they could program it and he, then the dog would only have to hit the button. So you know.
Now we're going down the hall, it's like that.
There's a couple of dogs out there that can get out of the car when you have to go off. All right. Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carry. I think we did them all.
All right. So then I'll award. All right. That's it.
Anyone have any questions for?
Go in, go in, your desk, you can.
No. Oh, and other, other business, just want to wish kids happy birthday.
Hey.
Chairman, it's worth.
You wanted to spend it?
That's the summer and day down.
Yeah. Happy birthday, Chairman. You don't think it'd been more appropriate to wish him a happy birthday in public safety than?
So with that, for the committee members, any other, other? We have one for our legal counsel.
I just wanted to let everybody know we were initially scheduled to have arguments on Warren Street Court, Cory crossing litigation on Friday. I just got notice that that's been moved now to February thirteenth, which is a couple of weeks from now. In the meantime, the town of Queensberry has apparently attempted to escalate matters, but they'll, they think, they think that's the town of Queens, Queensberry. And things may expand. I'll just leave it at that for this point.
We're giving out your answer.
Now, Dan, do you argue that case, Bert?
I'm, I'm going to be.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, with the street, I mean, the line goes right down the middle of the street, right? Is that correct?
That is part of the, the issue. Well, it's, it, it could become part of the issue. I mean, there's controller opinions right now that basically says a situation just like this, the municipalities have to work it out and generally share it. But as I said, it, it could become something bigger depending on how things play out.
And the people on the one side pay taxes to Warren County and one side pays to Washington County? Is that how it works? That's how it's set up right now.
That's how it's set up and town of Queensberry has both these roads on their inventory. They, you know, you can get the CHIPS funding and all that other fun stuff, but they've now chosen not to. Wow, my understanding is what they call it, Cory crossing reserve. So, so we'll, we'll see what happens. Any other, other business?
You're not, you're a juror.
You're not, you're a juror.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're ready to go.
Yes, sir.
Public safety meeting in order. Is there a motion except the minutes from the November? By Nate?
By.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, I guess we're starting with the U of P.
Good morning. Morning.
Good morning. I have a couple of agenda items, but one I'll be eliminating. Um, I need. I know, I'm, I'm making it easy. Oh, right.
Usually it's on their.
I don't need any action plan. Play for that, okay. Um, so the pre-trial services grant, we actually received. In, um, for program year twenty four, twenty five, and that's an award from DCJS to support pre-trial services. Um, after conferring with, uh, DCJS, they do not care if we use it in twenty four or if we used it in twenty five or did a combination. So, I think, um, I did not recognize these funds in twenty twenty four, so I'd like to recognize them in twenty twenty five. And then, I believe. Um. Roll the dollars, what if, what if I? I'm not sure what the.
Move it to finance.
There you go. I like this chair.
Their motion. Motion to move in finance.
For second. Olive, any questions?
What's the total amount?
The total amount is ninety seven thousand, six hundred and forty five. And the majority of which we will be just offsetting the cost of the point ones, but there are some purchases, um. Training dollars, we wanna, uh. Add some to our training dollars and tokens and planners for the. Uh, participants and buy some more educational model, uh, modules specifically for domestic violence. Or for those that are charged with harassment charges, um, so we want to buy some modules for that through this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Boss.
Any more questions? Um, favor moving it to finance?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
So, then the opioid settlement funds, I had originally thought I need to move these dollars into our new budget. Um, however, Al. Said that I did not need to do that, but we, we have yet to have any, uh, participants in the program. However, with our work with the Sheriff's Department, we've developed our policies, developed our procedures. They've, um, proved that their opioid settlement. Uh, dollars have identified somebody that's going to be running that, so we're ready for participants to, um, be. Engaged in the program and that was the pre-arrest diversion concept for those that are charged with lower level of frontal possession of controlled substance. To get them into treatment at the earliest possible. Movement, so all, everything's in place. To move forward and we would expect that we would offset, um, or use some dollars for overtime dollars. Moving forward.
We haven't had any participants because we weren't ready to go, or we?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly that. We, you know, we did all the prep work, um, to get moved on.
Is this ultimately based on federal funds? Does the federal funds come into the state? And if so, are we gonna have a judge?
That is a damn, is it? I don't think so.
This is opioid money.
Yeah, it's all settlement money, shouldn't be.
So, there's no.
So, you're not required to act.
No.
Well.
Not be that.
They go, stay there.
Okay.
I guess this question may be directed to Chairman, so probably that group that. That last year to discuss the opioid. Funding and we allocated it to different departments, maybe this would be a good time to reconvene and see where we are. Um, as far as unspent, what you might have to be rolled over. Twenty twenty five, or we may even want to allocate some of the funding in different areas, so. Something we want to discuss sooner than later and he's getting at that, look.
Yes, we can, we can. Be necessary.
Probably it's good.
And if it's a tour, you're just.
Wonderful opportunity to bring the new vice chairman.
Okay.
And then. Just an update on our rural community of practice, phase three grant that we received from DCJS back in twenty twenty two, it has ended. So, that was a total grant, we were one of seven that were chosen for this particular funding and this was the collaboration between. Um, Washington County and Warren County Probation Department, they received twenty three thousand, seven, uh, seventy five dollars out of the total seventy four, nine forty. And then we used the dollars to just, um, you know, we. Off, build program supports for the youth, so we used it for incentives throughout the time period, we used, um. Uh, dollars for youth employment to offset and to add dollars for a couple of years. Um, to add more kids to our youth employment, we used it for, uh, to purchase the interactive journals and kind of stock up on those, knowing that these are. You know, a good way to stock up on those, um, types of things, youth enrichment activities, we use them for, so it's been a, a great grant. It really is the third phase, so we've been receiving dollars through rural community of practice for. Nine, six years, you know, it was a smaller pot of money and then this time around, it was a larger pot of money, so we spent everything except for twenty cents. We did. Right, so it's just an informational item that this has ended. Or will be ending or have ended December thirty first.
What's the impact going forward? I mean, it doesn't change our programs, it, it sets us up so we're in a better spot, I assume, to go forward with what we were already doing.
Correct, so, yes, that's exactly it, so with the dollars from this, this, we were able to just really build up our supplies that we use for use. Um, and moving forward, I mean, we were even able to at some point in time purchase lifeguarding training supplies, so it really has. It has helped us immensely just by having this pot of money that we could do those types of things. And the idea was to collaborate with, you know, to build the, by county, you know, both counties had to agree to participate. With Washington County being the lead, so it was really that idea of kind of working together in some ways. We did throughout this grant, we combined Warren County probation and our department and we had, um, baking classes in Warren County a couple of times. And using the, uh, vegetables that we grew in the garden and they made zucchini bread, so we did those types of activities, other joint. Activities, so it's been beneficial, it was a good grant, if it comes back out, you know. Probably be asking permission to apply again.
Let me do this, apply our, by, I, our by county concept, there's a.
Uh, no, I think it definitely helped, it was the beginning of that working together and then that also rolled into the Y R reconnect grant that we worked with Warren County. That was Warren County received that grant and then we were a sub awardee and I can't even remember at the top of my head what the dollar amount was, it was like. Ten thousand dollars we received as a sub awardee, so we've kind of definitely gone back and forth. And, you know, they, they have access to grants and they keep us informed or add us to it, so it definitely has been beneficial. And probably the concept of the community of practice. Did work in this case, I think.
Do you believe you can sustain the program now?
Yeah, so it's really not even, it's really not even a program, it's like those supports, so right now we have enough of those. Um, items that we probably will not need to purchase a whole lot, um, probably not next year. Uh, maybe the year after and perhaps using our STSJP funds, so it allows us to move our STSJP funds to maybe add more to youth employment. Take away some other items and maybe not buy incentives through that funding stream and kind of maximize funding streams, I guess you would say.
Okay.
Anything else?
That is it.
Okay. Yes.
I want to take a moment to be, uh. And maybe not congratulate, at least applaud. So, efforts. Um. You know, I went completely ballistic last year when the hetero that youth grant. Group put in the. You know, for some support and they stated, you know, knee jerk. That, no, we don't support guns. We went back, so we're very hard, I went down, screamed at people. Uh, this year they are supporting that. If anybody hasn't been over to the. That, that's supporting the final competition. Which if anybody hasn't gone over to that, it's helped us politician game club, it's a really impressive meeting, just kids from all of the northeast competing. Uh, we had over six hundred shooters. Last year, it's really neat to look at it because you talk about inclusive. You know, we had, we had kids shooting wheelchairs, uh, you know, males and females competing together, I mean, it's the same. It's one of the more, more inclusive sports that there is, it's really great and, and. And we've had kids going off on full ride scholarships. And shooting on the Olympic team ultimately, uh, just then giving support for this, this one thing was really a big deal, I think it's, uh. And maybe we'll leave the state now and we'll. Maybe get some more support for this sort of thing. Elsewhere, but I really want to thank Sue for her efforts on that.
You're welcome, and we did leave the state on this one.
Yeah.
There was a lot of that asked whether they could apply last year, and we just decided to apply, so that was beneficial.
I mean, it's great to start, the, the volunteer was the. And great, who works at that, well. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Good to see, uh, are the youth kids gonna be helping at the Winter Fest?
Yeah, I think we have seven kids coming to Winter Fest, which is a reminder that Winter Fest is, uh, Saturday from ten to two at the water now.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, um. I just wanted to go over some. Of our grant process, what we have, since we have some new electics this year. Also, to go to the chairman's question, um, we have. Six grants that we currently operate with and three of those are federal grants. But we have no idea what's gonna happen. Um, of those, all three of those were still, one is open to hazard mitigation and. That was started last year, we haven't. Received any funds for that yet. I'm not sure how that's gonna work out and then our emergency management and our homeland security grants, we're still waiting for, from last year as well. Oh, no. Sure where that's all gonna land. Um, our one-off grant was the COVID grant. That was a disaster recovery grant. We. Had requested a hundred and seventy two thousand, six ninety six. After appeal. Received forty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty three. So, there was no guarantee on us getting any of that. They first gave us an award of eighteen thousand, but we appealed it, worked with the state. Went through. And we were able to get the additional thirty thousand. In discussion with our. Folks at the state, they did not feel that appealing it again was gonna be. Worthwhile, but trying to get it.
I need to grant nine centers.
All done, that's all taken care of.
We need to recognize.
I'll make you one if you're gonna spend it, otherwise it just rides in the fun belt, I think.
Um, so our. The main part of our operation communications. We run off of grants. I think we'll do an extensive. A lot of stuff with our. Communications grants. So, our, just the background, our, through all of our grants. Some started in two thousand and seven, others in two thousand and fifteen for emergency management. We've re, received overall three hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. Homeland Security. One point two million. Our communications grant, nine million. The PSAP grant, two million. Uh, terrorism, three hundred and forty four thousand and our two hazard mitigation grants of two hundred and fifty two thousand. With the PSAP grant. That. With the exception of maybe one or two years. That's all gone towards personal. When we get that PSAP grant. Put that towards our personal costs. E-communications projects that we've done with our communications grant. Starting in twenty eighteen, we replaced our, replaced the microwave system, which was our connection between all the hours. We've done audio recorder upgrades, we've done a complete replacement of the public safety communication system. Nine one one. And we've added two additional tower sites, portable radios. Radio consoles down in dispatch, we replaced and upgraded all of the mobile radios and the sheriff's cars. We built a backup dispatch, PSAP and E O C down at the fairgrounds. Upgrades to the old field comm unit. We just started a complete refresh of all of the portable radios for the sheriff's office. We are in the testing phase. Waiting implementation, um. To put portable repeaters in the patrol cars. So, when the patrols get to fringe areas. And they have trouble getting out on their portable, portable talks back to the car and then it. The car is. Actually talks back to dispatch. So, we're looking forward to getting that out to increase the safety of our patrols. We've done. A new shelter up at Willard this year, last year. We're putting in repeaters at. At the first four schools of Fortin, Whitehall, Granville and Salem to increase law enforcement and SRO communications out of the school. Then. A no-cost item for the county is we have the new tower going in at Big Birch through coordination with the cellular company. And then we have a targeted grant, um, which is, so the communications grant, one is formula, which they have some. Magic eight ball that they decide how much each county gets. And then there's a targeted grant where they specifically say this is what this needs to go to. So, we have two point nine million targeted grant from last year. That will be going towards another upgrade of the communication system, which will be a. Very large upgrade. That will be going towards another upgrade of the communication system, which will be a very large upgrade, which will have some. Substantial benefits to the end users and the subscribers. Be able to connect to the dispatch. Nice. Overall thirteen million dollars. Grant funds that we've used so far for public safety operations.
I mind on Big Birch.
Say again?
I mind on Big Birch on the tower.
They had some regulatory issues unforeseen. They are expecting, expecting a start in springtime. The last update I got was springtime, late spring to have it on.
I'm sure I'll notice right away.
You'll you'll notice that there's something other than corner stakes in the, in the log.
Yeah. So dovetail into that question. How many, how much federal, based on the vulnerabilities, right? How many of those uh vulnerabilities are tied to federal funding, you know, fixing them?
The, the one, the specific homeland security grant, so David, it used to be we could uh. Give our projects, but now before we even apply, there are specific federal priorities. So there's five different federal priorities that are tied to the application and each year. Those, how much money you put towards those vulnerabilities increases that started out at five percent, went to fifteen and now it's thirty percent of the grant. So you can, we could do, you know, three vulnerabilities for ten percent each or thirty percent for one. Uh critical infrastructure, soft targets, information sharing, cybersecurity, election security. There might be one more, but yes, the homeland security, they're changing that specifically to go into these national priorities. Areas and our state grant folks don't foresee that ever going. Or previously never saw that going away. It's hard just as far as the priority of being like. Thank you.
Glenn, are you aware of any upgrades in the southern end of the county? I received a phone call in Coila last night. It caught me quite off guard. It's the first time I think.
Oh. There's.
I don't normally have service there and I had it, there was a bell last night.
I believe they were looking at uh doing some upgrades in the village and check out.
I I'm just curious because.
Yeah, I, I had heard of that as well. Part of the issue is the cell companies. Compartmentalize their projects. So like the Big Birch project, the gentleman that I deal with. The projects that he was aware of and could tell me about were the projects that were happening in the town of Hebron.
Right, sure.
Uh which thankfully was free, so that's substantial for the town of He- uh county. And usually the, usually the way we find out about any of the other ones is either through planning or through real property.
Thank you, sir.
Glenn, I, I have a question. Up in Dresden, we were crispens. I don't know if this is exactly the right area. We had a search and rescue, but the review was pretty hard up there at Black Mountain and also along the trail going all the way to Highland.
Yes.
Where is that on the horizon?
Well, that is very, that is on the horizon and we're walking up the hill as it is. So the tower on Black Mountain is a state tower. And we've already, in coordination with the state police and and con, our plan is to put radios on Black Mountain. So we've received the A P A, state has received the A P A authority for acknowledgement, whatever, to do that. Um part of the issue is that's a complete solar site. There is no. Actual power up there. So the state is in the process of upgrading the solar panels and the batteries that. Uh feed that site. So that's been the biggest delay right now. They had some setbacks last year. So they were able to finish everything they needed for us to be able to go up there with the additional. Power that our system would do. Hopefully this year we will have. Black Mountain, which will help the area considerably.
Will that coordinate across the lake and make it easier also? Do you have any black spots up where you are in?
Oh, yes.
Leave the triangle?
It's gonna help, it's gonna help. I, Dresden and Putnam are very difficult, especially out by the lakes. Once we get black live, see if there's anything else we can try and do to make it better.
We have to coordinate if we want to use the ability of black to communicate across the lake, think of that.
No, it's all, that's all part, radio wise, coverage is coverage, we can't. Um and part of saving money as well as the microwave system is how we communicate with the towers. And the state police is going to let us ride on their microwave, which we already do to get to defiance. So that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense that we will have to worry about. Mr. Chairman?
Right back. Put down Black Mountain Tower live, it did a. And my, my huge diss spot for my guys was up also Dresden and up USA, up around the lake over there and it did a wonderful, wonderful job. Unfortunately, the department was, didn't like it. They chopped up the power wire, they run through the woods up there. Well, they put up a. Windmill, they didn't like the sound of that, so they tore that down. So maybe they'll like the solar panels better and leave it alone, but uh they had a lot of it.
We have lithium batteries, um holding the charge.
It'll burn down in that rock.
But also, our radio system is a simulcast system, so we transmit on all of the towers, all of the time. And our other Lake George towers on Prospect, so we have, that helps get us into Pilot. And up on the Sleeping Beauty and Buck, black should help cover it. So between all seven towers. Things will get covered. Right.
Well, first that, isn't that A T and T's project in the Atlantic Park?
Yes.
That won't cover any of that.
Well, that's just so. Yes, there's, there's an A T and T tower in Hewlett's Land, yes.
But is that enough to cover those areas or it's a, a dead spot there?
There's, it's, it's that, there's still a lot of dead spots within the blue, within the blue line is still.
Yeah, but I would think if first that actually worked. To what they were trying to develop, that that would eventually take care of that because the primary of. Primarily what they were trying to do was, if there's any incident at all, you or me driving up the road can't use it, but EMS. And fire.
Right, if they have a person at, oh, yes. But that's also, then they would have to call on the phone and then. They're, they are working on it as far as getting more towers, but it's, that's about a slow process.
And Al's right, we're, we're seeing more coverage in Hebron without the tower to be built, so. I, I don't know what they're doing, but somebody's doing something.
I think they've started stuff up on Presbyterian as well.
And that quarter of a million, is that an annual cost?
No, 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 that's for the, so that's from one tower to the other for the microwave. It's just equipment. It's a one-time.
One time.
One, one microwave shot is roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, the building.
Turn over the rest and.
Uh just an update on the responder health program. That was a program that's funded through the opioid funding. We're happy to announce that we actually have a kickoff date. Uh it's gonna be February sixth. So we pushed that contract, so it was calendar year, January to December of twenty twenty-five. Since we weren't paying for what we weren't using at the end of twenty-fourth. Um they were gracious enough to do that, so we're happy to announce we're gonna have a kickoff here. In the afternoon, I just talked to Sergeant Sullivan over at the sheriff's office with their wellness program. We're gonna do a joint kickoff for the parents and public safety personnel in the afternoon. When we have the height of the majority of our people here, that we can kind of shake them out, go over into that. And then in that evening, uh about six-thirty, we're finalizing the timeframe. We're gonna open the training room to all the volunteer fire EMS, other law enforcement agencies in the county to bring them in for that kickoff. And from there, we're gonna take our personnel, the sheriff's office personnel and go out and do in-person kickoff events for anybody who couldn't make it to that. So uh I think that this will be a huge benefit to the program as a whole in partnership with the other parts and pieces. So we at the county for our employees have the regular E A P program through Sue McManus and her group. Uh on top of Sergeant Sullivan's wellness program with the first responders and responder help and partner with that. So as soon as we finish the invite, which probably will be this afternoon or tomorrow, I will make sure you all get a copy of that. So thank you all again for that. I just wanted to make sure you updated on where we're going. Uh we have a couple of personnel updates. Uh first and foremost, we have. Two uh members of our team that are in the process of departing or have departed. Uh first Madison Coso, who has been a communications officer for us. She started here in twenty seventeen with D S S and then transferred to us. And was a great addition to our team. She's moving out of the area. So effective tomorrow, her position becomes open, leaving us with one open full-time communications officer position. Uh and Craig Baskin, who has been one of our fire investigators since two thousand four. So was putting a lot of time with the county. And contributing to the fire investigation team, so we just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that we were very thankful for their service. And their varying years and expertise that they brought to the team and we will miss both of them. On the communication side, relative to the one full-time opening I just mentioned to you that starts tomorrow. Um we have another that we're expecting mid-March, uh our retirement that's coming up. Uh which we are sad to see also go. Um experience of the door is, is very difficult to replace. So in talking with Danielle, we obviously wanna fill the one full-time spot as soon as we can get a viable candidate. Which we have multiple candidates in process now, either in interviews or in training. Uh some of them, however, are per diem candidates, not available for full-time. Some of them, uh we haven't finished the interviews yet. Relative to the second position, um which technically doesn't open until March. As you all know, it takes us about four months to train somebody. So being down two full-timers, that's a concern of ours every day, making sure that we're operating safely in there right now. Where we will be filling the first opening with overtime every day. Uh that means in addition, we'll be filling the second opening with overtime every day. So the sooner that we can start training somebody. In those positions, uh the better off we'll be when the retirement actually happens. And we won't be four months out of training somebody past that. So we would like to ask uh for permission to make whatever change is necessary to be able to hire that as soon as we get a viable candidate. And that may not be for a couple of weeks, uh till we identify somebody, one, that's interested in a full-time position and two. That makes it through the interview process and we feel will be successful uh in our training program.
Is there any breakage?
No.
Are you looking, asking to hire one or asking to hire two? That's what, I have one to fill and the one to start training.
Right, the one that's leaving.
Correct. Really, we're asking to hire two. The one we can already hire, just based on the opening, we have the ability to hire those positions. Um but the second one, we just wanna get started early. If we find a candidate, that's. That's a good candidate for us in that, uh into that full-time spot. Training somebody at full-time hours is drastically different than training somebody at twenty hours a week. I mean, that's a very difficult job. And when I say four months, I mean four months of training every day at eight to twelve hours a day. Not four months of training at twenty hours a day. It's a lot to learn. It's a lot to.
So if we look at timeline, you can start it now. You're probably gonna hire someone who will know February.
Probably.
So are you really talking about a month overlap?
Most likely, yes. Again?
I'm trying to understand what you've said. Uh would you, or can you offer a full-time position to a part-time? Employee in your. And are they trained the same? So would, would he, he or she be able to step into the full-time position?
Yes, we can, um if the candidate's available for full-time. Some of the folks that we have in training now are Perdiam employees and they're Perdiam because they don't have the availability to be full-time. Uh what I think is some of our concern on, why do we wanna make sure that we're shoring up for the future for the staff that. We're not filling it for the rest of the year completely, you know, stressing out the staff anymore than we need to.
Well, I can't, I'm just trying to understand. It's, it's, you're part-time Perdiam. Um is that because that's all you need, or is that all that's available? Do you have, you created? Part-time positions there, right?
Yes, prior to now, uh to the opening that exists starting tomorrow, that's all we've had available for you. So we have a couple of people in training in Perdiam. Um one of which is not available for full-time, so they're gonna be a Perdiam employee for us for the future. The other is a potential full-time employee. And then obviously, we're in process of interviewing and doing the other background checks. To hopefully hire another full-time employee and as we continue additional Perdiam people. Perdiam has been challenging in the last five years to keep enough people that are interested in the stress of the job, working nights, weekends and holidays. Uh just like, I mean, it's become more evident on the full-time side, right? Um it's even more difficult to get someone to wanna do that for you. It used to be the opposite. We used to have ten Perdiams and never had a problem. But a lot of people just don't want, they don't have the time to put in to be able to train like that at a Perdiam level. Um and keep up their skills enough to be able to do it as a team, rather than someone who does it every day. And when you talk about the technology that is required and the ability to operate under those circumstances. They very difficult, yeah, it gets harder every day. Right?
So to clarify that a little, the four months of overtime is easy to train each person.
Correct.
So you're gonna have that no matter when they start. So that costs no difference. The only difference is the full time for that month. It's really.
All right, we'll trim off, the earlier we start, if we are able to have a successful candidate, the earlier we stop that, so.
Right, so but the cost is no, the cost won't really change because you still need that four months.
Correct.
Of training.
And every year.
Month that it overlaps is, or and it could be up to two, but we're basically talking a month of regular time is the difference.
Correct.
It's gonna cost us that overtime no matter what. I, I guess that's how I was trying to frame it, so we under.
Yeah.
Stand, we're not.
Yeah.
It's a position where we gotta pay it either way.
Yeah.
Your, the dispatchers you have down there, are they aware what's gonna be asked of them to cover this?
Yeah, their deficiency, they're aware. Yep. Our staff, honest to God, is great. Um we wouldn't be here without them. Right, they have, uh we've been through difficulties before. They come together, uh they work together. Our communication center supervisor has done a great job on schedule and worked with the staff, trying to meet the needs of them as people. And make sure that we're meeting the needs of who are residents and first responders on the other side.
Well, personally, I think a lot of that is to you, to do to you and Glenn. And they're staying there and doing the job, knowing this is coming because there's a lot of people, they, they age when I step up the place.
Well, we appreciate the credit, but we, we know it's them who does the hard work, not us.
Well, we got into a ditch about two years ago and it was a tough climb out. I don't wanna slip, I'm trying to figure out a way so we don't slip back into that with, with the overtime number, so.
Bottom line is really, if you bring on the two people now, you're taking the strength of the overall office for one of those months. Cause you still have ones that are deployed still there to train. Cause once they're gone, you're adding the more stress to training two people while you're hurtful.
So when we look at, when we look at the overall picture of the operation right now is our. Relatively regular time, right? As we get closer to summer, activity picks up and there's no ability to. Be short on anything, right? Our hope is, the sooner that we can turn out full-time candidates. The, the more stress it will relieve on the staff to be full staff as we get towards the summer months. So time is of the essence for us.
You're like, I thought you were making an auction here that, you have a mission to. Gonna hire the extra person.
Yeah, so let me do that. First of all, put it on the table, pushing to exceed the budget headcount. For training purposes. To meet that need for. To meet that need for.
Is there a second for that? More discussion.
My my point is if you do the math on the OT to what you were getting at. You do the math on the OT. There's an intangible burnout that we're trying to avoid. And you'll definitely get there pretty quick once we hit the summer months when everybody decides to come back and be on that X. It it may, it may be a wash, is my point. With the OT, so i- if we can look at. Other other options just besides the staff, what's in the budget for staffing. If there's any breakage anywhere. With the critical. It's a critical requirement. I think anyways arguing that. How how do we transition this thing so we're not bailing ourselves on the problem? That's my concern. Cause cause we got close to burnout about to reach it. It really did. And that was kinda unnerving for a number of us.
I mean, for us, we're there, right? We're close to burnout right now. We run at minimum staffing every day. But there's no breakage to drop below. We run at minimum staffing every day. So the workload by any means has not decreased. If anything, the number of people are the same, the workload has increased. Right? You look across the county, everything's up, calls for service are up, law enforcement wise, EMS wise, fire wise. Everybody's busier. We certainly are too. Right here is just this concern has been a concern that we need to address as soon as we possibly can to get additional people into training. And if we have a candidate that we can move into a full-time slot, we'd like to do that before March fifteen. If we don't, we'll train them at per diem level and if they turn into a full-time employee, we'll turn them into a full-time employee, you know.
Any more discussion on the motion? On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Are you seriously? Because otherwise it doesn't pass because you have your bare minimum, you won't get a majority.
And uh it's a little bit free eyes, right?
No, it doesn't because you only have a quorum four, which is the majority of the committee. If you vote no, majority of the committee has not approved it.
I did have a. I say yes. Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. And we will keep you updated on that. Please press forward. Um moving into fire, um we have casual. Fire investigation trainees spots uh open for a bit. We've been looking at the state curriculum that's out there relative to training a fire investigator. And with the opening, uh the retirement of investigator Baskin. So we technically have one full-time opening, or not full-time, there are part-time employees, one part-time opening for a fire investigator. And two existing for fire investigator trainees. Uh we posted all three of those positions. Uh the two, two trainees and the one investigator. We actually have had a good number of applications come back. None of them meet the requirements for the fire investigator position. So we would like to hire three fire investigator trainees, which there will be breakage for. Right now, a fire investigator makes double what a trainee makes. So when we're funded for the two trainees and one full investigator by hiring three trainees. Will actually save some money because they're half the cost of an investigator. So we would like to move forward. We're actually planning to start those interviews in the next couple of weeks. And select the three best candidates and begin the training process of reading fire investigator trainees.
Does that have to be personal?
Yes, it does. I think Danielle, this is something that we've talked to Danielle about um in detail and Danielle has some suggestions on. How we can alleviate having to do that in the future. Uh this is not something that happens very often. I don't think maybe we've hired one fire investigator in the last six years. Um so it's not something that happens very often. But we do anticipate that we may have some additional fire investigator openings in the future, so.
Will these trainees make qualifications and be the full-time? Down down the road?
Yes. So the goal, when we when we presented this, it was actually, I think, a couple of years ago, when this position was created. Uh was the goal would be that when they complete their training, they would transition into full fire investigators and we would empty out the training staffing. Obviously, we haven't filled those positions yet. We're at the point where we're looking down the road and we need to start planning for that. Education-wise, it takes about a year and it could be even a little more to get them up to snuff and get certified to be full fire investigators. If they don't come in with a background in fire investigation, so.
If you said they're paid, are the trainees paid as well as the investigator paid?
Yes.
Are they paid? Or are they paid per incident?
Nope, they're paid part-time salary, so they just receive an allocation.
So they're employees in other counties?
Correct.
And. I I don't know why I'm having a heart that I'm understanding it. So they report to the county, uh the trainees do every day?
They they don't come to the office? Their role is responding to and investigating fires or assisting fire investigators and responding to it.
When there's a fire.
When there's a fire.
But other than that, they're what? I guess do they have other jobs that they get?
They have full-time jobs, majority of them. Some of them might be retired or. But they have jobs elsewhere.
And but yet they're paid a salary to be ready to go.
They're paid a salary to to serve when they're available to assist with a fire investigation.
Kinda like a supervisor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Uh this one is, sorry, I'm just trying to go down the list and keep it as much as fly as I possibly can. Um so DPW in the past, uh recently, I don't know how long ago, Deb. Deb put a program into place in which um. DPW was usually or using a fleet management and GPS system assigned to the DPW heavy equipment and vehicles. Uh for a multitude of purposes, operational efficiency to reduce, you know, safety and security of employees, equipment, those kind of things. Uh Deb or that wanted to expand to the rest of the carpool fleet. So it was talked about at the recent uh safety team meeting and along with a host of other things. And identified as something that we should have a policy on at the county level, just because it is a system that will be rolled out to all carpool. Uh so in talking to Dan and talking to Melissa and the chairman. Was trying to shake this into the same kind of box that went there. We know that this is not the place where policies live, that it would go on to GovOps. Uh but the group put together a draft policy that we request that you all review and hopefully send on. To that box so that program can make its way out. If you look at it, it looks very familiar to the. The shape and form of. Uh many of the recent policies you've seen, access video recording system, those kind of things.
Is this the same system that like Deb can retrace? Where a vehicle has gone like somehow, what a route, what it would show the route where it traveled to file that day?
Yes, for example, somebody came in the other day and was complaining that nobody can buy the house on Thanksgiving. And we were in, pulling it up on the map and showing them just when the clouds were near their house. And they were pretty happy afterwards. They were fit to be timed when they got there. So it all ended up, it it's proven it's very beneficial.
Well, there's in case of any other legal questioning, you've got the records.
This has come up and uh in in the past. When we've stopped and submitted with each department doing their safety assessment every year. There have been a couple of departments and I won't bring them out by name, but. Had concern over their folks in the field that if you didn't have contact with them, how would you know there was something wrong? Right? Obviously, we have a lot of people out there. It's not something the rest of the fleet, like certainly dispatch would use it on an emergency basis, right? You don't know where the SSS employee is and they're unaccounted for. And the department supervisor calls and says, hey, we're worried about so-and-so. Um but yes, it's the same system that Deb's using and it's just expanding it to the rest of the carpool.
And it's truly GPS. It's there's no doubt.
What's the cost to expanding to?
I think it's already in your budget and paid for, right?
I can look up where it was.
Oh, we have it in the budget cover for twenty twenty-five.
We were just trying to formalize in the process to make sure that there was documentation associated.
So basically, you had, you brought one out, GPS, you've got like you tell if it's out in the road, you can tell if it's from bank or where it is.
You could tell with the location of it.
Yes.
Long as it was sour. They helped that and install pieces of equipment or if they take it, didn't we have a tractor on one that got pulled up? One of those little generators?
We have recently put them on all of those assets, like generators and stuff, but uh we didn't have them on. There was one on our sign, but when they, as that came to the sign, but when they stole tires and batteries, they wouldn't give it signs.
That was, that was the story. That was.
They left the GPS, that's all they left.
Do they have their own power source? These, the trackers, are they connected to the power source?
They power off the vehicle.
So if you steal something, first thing to do is undock the battery?
Which, so then you have the last.
You got the the last known location.
Yeah, that's all you know where the stuff. That form would be for users to sign that have access to the system. Tracks of speed and everything too? Yep. It don't have access to it currently. Uh Supervisor Hogan was asking. Well, that's why I'm asking. They have what they describe as telematics and they produce your insurance payment, so it's tracking their speed.
No, I tracked the speed because um there was a lady who was saying that our trucks were going by too fast from in her house, at her house. And one truck went by at thirty-one miles an hour. And I guaranteed to her that we would speak with them.
I I mean, for us, uh relative to, Melissa can speak to this too, uh accident investigation follow-up certainly be a great tool. And alleviates a lot of the concern over what happened, what didn't happen relative to. Those kind of things.
Go back to David, will they get a reimbursement from our insurance company?
Most of the insurance companies are putting these cars out. They're called telematics and they're giving a reduction for the insurance if you do it. Would it be a conversation with Nightmare and see if they do?
We uh did defensive driving for our guys in some other county places, so.
Last time I heard, we were maxed out as far as. That's what I had heard.
We're we're too safe.
We received all of the.
Nightmare always says no. They always say no upfront, and then you push and press and they seem to get a little more. You and I, I mean, they do, they get stupid when they first make a request to them and then they. Seem to come around, which they did in one case with with us, correct? Find another company if they don't.
And do all the, obviously, the big, the big truck drivers, when we get it in all the carpools, everybody's gonna be aware that they're being tracked, correct?
Well, they're not necessarily being tracked, like there's, they have live view on down in the basement at the nine one one center. But the um not everybody has access to track them, but yes, you could pull up history on any of the ones that are in there.
Under certain circumstances.
Right, right.
Do we need to act on this or just for our information to go to go back? We just wanna ask that you move to go back.
I'll make the motion to move to go up.
Some more questions. It doesn't violate any of the for the SSS? No.
It's not collecting any personal or any personal information or medical.
It's really being used just so we know the location of.
So I'll make a motion to move to.
On favor? Next. All right. Uh request to surplus the vehicle. Um we have a two thousand thirteen Ford Expedition that we have replaced a couple of years ago with grant funds. Uh has eighty-eight thousand miles on it, recommendation from the. Carpool shop administrator, I don't know what his title is, but he's the genius at the carpool. And yeah, he definitely deserves it. Um is that we surplus the vehicle, that it's not something that the advice is we keep. So we are asking to move forward with surplusing that vehicle and in addition to the hazmat truck. To be able to retain whatever we end up getting back from that and put that towards the purchase of utility vehicle. Old trailers and the other things that are out there.
Yeah, motion second. Any more discussion on it?
On favor, aye? All right. Record Services Rotation. Everybody likes talking about this, but uh we had a call um about a month and a half ago now. But I don't think we've had a committee meeting since we received the correspondence from this resident. It's a resident of Rensselaer County who lives just over the border in the Cambridge Central School District. Who owes, who owns a towing business and he's asked to be considered for addition to our record services rotation. Typically, we don't allow out-of-county businesses on our record service rotation, however. The policy does allow for it in certain cases. Uh. It specifically states that Washington County unless coverage of a specific area allows for out-of-county services. I.e. we don't have any services in that area. In the town of White Creek, uh the town of Cambridge. We have one record services agency that services that area. Uh by default, you're allowed to be on the town that you're in and any adjoining towns. If there's not a town that adjoins that, the agencies that are in the closest to joining are on it. In the past, we have not allowed out-of-county record services agencies to participate in the rotation. This doesn't in any way, shape or form uh take away from an owner or officer request. So if you're an owner of a vehicle and you say I want Joe's towing, even if he's three counties over. That's where that reflects those to Joe towing unless somebody says otherwise. So we were just looking for uh guidance from the committee on. I feel about letting it out of county agency not to rotate.
No, I was gonna make a camp member for the committee.
I wanna know what you think. Just being polite, bringing it to us. I think um. I don't get paid to think of this area. Do we need it? I I understand this is a town that has one agency on it. The agency that's on it is very active. Um and they take a lot of record calls, so. I'm I'm not sure. Obviously, the idea of the policy way back when, when this was created, was to keep in-county businesses. Uh that spent the money in records, you know, as long as they met their requirements, go into toll calls. In this area, it is an area where there's not a lot of coverage, but there is coverage right now. So I'm not quite sure that, you know, it's a, it's a really tough call. Uh which is why, yeah, so being nice.
Tim is being, being nice, saying there isn't a lot of coverage there. There is a tow record guy in Jackson who will say that he's not getting enough business from the county on calls. And he is adjoining White Creek and Cambridge, so I'm telling him if we did this, he'll probably be right up here to a board meeting. So.
The other question is, a guy that's asking. Is it because the guy's pre-cutting Cambridge and still over the horse in Rensselaer taking business?
I don't think so. I think he's newly formed down there and he is a resident of the Cambridge Central School District. So I think that was his concern is, he does participate, although he's not a resident of Washington County. He's a, he's a resident and a taxpayer in the Cambridge Central School District. Um you know, we sent him the policy and said, if you wanna write a letter, certainly bring it to committee to discuss it. Uh you know, our our goal, or I think the whole goal when this. You know, our, our goal, or I think the whole goal when this was created, which is a long time ago, was to try and keep it as fair as possible for everybody involved. Which I totally understand and I found out why we was brought here.
We have been silent about record policy for so, how many years?
I know.
And, you know, I just think if you do this, you can open the door to someone else. If that's a problem.
Yeah, black lines falls when it's coming across.
Danny, Will, go ahead.
Is there any real deficiencies with the sheriff's department out there waiting too long to get a record there for service?
We haven't heard of any complaints on the other side as of yet. I mean, certainly, we, we can, we can say something along the lines, if the committee is comfortable with it, that in an emergency situation, if there's no one available in that area and you wanna participate as an ancillary member, you could do that. I mean, that, if there is an area, we have two areas in the county that you don't have a lot of services. One is the far south on the Cambridge White Creek side. The other is the far north. Right? So there are at times where you do have to call out of county services when no one is available. You know, so we, we can offer that up if you wanna turn in your information and we have nobody available. I will add you to the list if we exhaust all the in-county resources, if that's the feeling from the committee. That, that is definitely something that we can do.
Isn't that something you do automatically anyway?
Right. Well, that's not something typically, we don't hear a lot from any people that are interested in something like this, right? The majority of the time, we try to call adjoining towns inside the county. So for example, if we have one down in White Creek right now, we go back this way. So we would be calling sale. We would be going east and which does have other carpool services on it. Jackson, Cambridge and White Creek are all the same now. It's got the one agency on it.
Maybe we should leave it alone for now.
You heard the committee. Understood. Thank you.
Make it a little heavy.
And last, but not least, we just have some emergency management updates. One, the chairman asked us to just provide a quick overview on a large scale incident that a lot of us were involved in in the village of Whitehall at the end of December. So obviously, they had a water situation up there. Everyone knows the majority of the information. I will say, we are very appreciative of County DPW, the other towns and villages that assisted. Jimmy Hogan and Dev in particular were right there. Those PZOs spent a lot of time there with us. It was, it was an excellent operation to really bring everybody together. Sewer agency came and assisted. I mean, places that typically you don't see, all have the same thing. In addition to the partners that we had from New York State that were there with us. Sunday night, chairman coming up there and spending lots of time there with us. So certainly, our goal is to get the residents of the village of Whitehall and the village back on their feet and with water as soon as possible. And the intermediary was providing shelter and bottled water and support in all those other areas. And everything that got together, they obviously worked feverishly with their engineers and outside contractors to be able to restore water service there. And they're continuing, they meet currently with the Department of Health and their engineers, their DPW folks, their village mayor. One of us participates in their meeting. And that's still an ongoing process up there. The school was an excellent partner throughout this and are still working to conserve water there. I can't tell you enough how much really went into it. I think that the chairman just really wanted everybody to know that how well one everybody did. But how it can become a very complex incident like that, something you don't think about if it shouldn't happen in your, in your village. If you don't have water, you're lucky. Because if you do, that should be a real concern in long-term planning. When we looked at the amount of resources we have available, everything we had was there in a short amount of time, right? All of our generators ended up up there. DPW personnel, all trailers around for us, water tankers that we were able to get from the state. Lots of donations in terms of bottled water. The village did have to pay for some. But there were a lot of donations in addition to what we were able to get from the state. Which, you know, we're being told that probably won't happen in the future. That will become a scarce resource that'll be provided by the state in the future. So they do have equipment. It'll just be like they want some tools like that. That'll be very difficult to get. But everybody worked excellently together and we very much appreciate the support. We all know we couldn't do it without everybody else. So being there to support the village and the residents, more importantly, is really what we're all here for, thankfully. Although it was a long three days for them with no water, they were all very happy to get water back and they had to start doing things they couldn't do. They were out.
Tim, what actually happened?
Don't know the specifics of everything in detail. And certainly, they have a
You said with like planning, long-term planning for the town and the villages with water.
So long-term planning, right? Checking your water source, knowing how much is coming in and how much is going out. You know, I think there they have aging infrastructure. I think that's been something that's been discussed. I'm not sure on, you know, how they manage their water system. You know, they have some really dedicated employees that I think work around the clock throughout that, at the end of that. But I'm not entirely sure to provide you with full and accurate details of what happened, other than the supply of water stopped to the village. For those three days, they certainly worked to install an ancillary pump into the water source to push water to the system. But where do they get their water from?
Fine lake. And so, infrastructure failed? Is that the idea? From fine lake?
I don't know. It's a, it's a gravity fed system. So I don't know, the infrastructure failed. You know, there was a lot of discussion whether there was enough water to provide a head pressure that gravity fed the water to the system. Like that was some of the concern from the village. I never made it up to the site. All the people much smarter than me were up there. Engineers, contractors, those kind of things. You know, we kind of stayed in the village, providing the ancillary resources, coordinating the bottled water, sheltering. You know, one thing I did forget to mention that, and I wanna make sure I do, the fire departments were essential to what we did. We had a number of volunteer fire departments come in and assist us in delivering bottled water to residents that couldn't get out. So they were going to senior housing complex, delivering water to them every day, assisting them if they needed help fill in the backs of their toilets, the foot of the toilets. Going to the local park at the south end of the village, trying to make sure that we hit any place we knew people couldn't come to get water. Three days without water is a long time.
Tim. You, you mentioned, you know, the help and the state sent water tankers. It was a little frustrating finding out that we had milk truck companies that had certified clean sanitized tanks returning with certified water and then they weren't being allowed to be used by Department of Health. Even if it was for flushing the toilets or anything else. That's, I mean, you're in a county where they could back haul a lot of water in once and providing services, so it's safe. It was just shut down.
The only thing I'll say relative to that, as I know there was frustration, once the tankers got there, including that one, there was no shortage of water. We had more water. In terms of tankers and being able to fill things than we should. There was, we staged the, you know, the, the decision was made there to stage that tanker they were referring to at Town Highway. We didn't wanna put that tanker since DOH couldn't certify that as portable drinking water next to the portable drinking water tankers. But we didn't turn it back at the time. We staged it. Obviously, I think after a day or so, right? If it wasn't gonna get used, they came back. We were not involved in discussions with the DOH on whether it could be used for the drinking water or not. But I will tell you that the outpouring of support from the community and the surrounding communities was really the highlight of the entire event. How many people came together? We heard from churches and other NGO organizations that brought water, brought food, brought paper. So anything you can think of that people?
That were well outside of.
I think, yeah, and one thing to that, I know that they have their problem with Whitehall. It's a very close knit community. Over the last thirty years, I've been in Whitehall a lot because my wife's the original resident of Whitehall. And the work that some of those different groups do is totally unbelievable. Where they lack spending up the water and sewer infrastructure. And I, I don't know if there's enough money to ever get that where it belongs. And it can get everybody pushed in the same position, like pulling in the same direction whenever. I think there's opportunity there, but the community has always been really close knit. Whether that can keep going. And I know the Champlain beef burn too. Which was a huge thing with all our mutual aid. Everyone came together and that's supposed to start up, I think, again in Dubai. And nobody realizes the amount of beef that went through that place. So I think there's huge opportunity there. And we've always looked for ways to help things like that. I think you got to see kind of the heart of the, the people in Whitehall. So it, it does have its challenges, but there's a good group of people there trying to do the right thing.
I think the community certainly had a challenging year up there. The, the bigger point in the ability to look at this afterwards is if you have one of these systems, there should be a concern of yours. Not because you run out of water, but if you're major main brakes and you can't fix it right away, it's getting harder and harder to get parts and pieces to systems. You know, this isn't the only one. Saw the major water failure in Water Town about a couple of years ago, right? Where they were without water for three days. That's a significant concern for anybody with a water system is when we And I think this leads into the next part of what I was gonna talk about. If you don't have any more questions that I can answer, I just don't wanna say the something that isn't totally correct is when we have those emergency management trainings, these are the things we talk about. And planning at your own county village levels is redundancy, backups, what you do with, how does this work? Having a good understanding of your systems and knowing your contractors, what to do in those certain situations. You know, I think this was an excellent an excellent display of how resources do come together, but knowing that stuff ahead of time. Yeah, we all have the benefit of looking at that now and going, man, I never thought to ask that question. Right? So certainly, it brings a lot of credence to everything we do talk about with the trainings. Chairman, is there anything you wanna add?
No, I think that, that last point is very good. You have a little water system. When you're doing your emergency management plan, there's stuff you can learn from this one. You gotta study this one a little bit. And see things like, like that. Milk truck full of water. The other problem with that was there's no way to get it into bottles. You know, it's had some guy show up with two, you know, two gallon jug, gonna fill it up and turn that valve on, you're gonna fall across the street. So you gotta, you gotta have, you know, getting the water there is one thing, getting it in a usable form is something entirely different. That's, we had that issue. I mean, it's just things you don't think about, but did come up in this situation. And it could, could certainly happen. I think that Dana's question, the problem was, and for whatever reason, there was a lot more water going out than there should have been. And they drained the lake based, the lake was down fourteen feet. That's problem and.
Drawn didn't help, but it was clear once and again, the lake was dropping. The lake got to a certain level. The outflow actually has an uprise before a downrise, kind of like your toilet, like a so, right? And that's where it ran out. Now the pumps are actually pumping from lower than the original intake and water's gonna be going up out most of it. So they're in continually precarious risk. One last thing. I have good news. As part of, must for some reason, this getting put on hold. As part of the flood mitigation project that the governor set in place at the end of last year, every county's emergency management office is set to receive the number of pieces of equipment to aid in these efforts moving forward. So at some point, and it's in the process of being prepared right now, so I don't know how much and when, we will be getting some additional pumps, some three and four inch pumps, I think, to supplement what we have on hand. And those pumps are water pumps, they're garbage pumps, whatever you want. We will also be getting a light tower or two. So we already have one that the county owns, that Public Safety has, that's used by any entity that needs it for an official purpose. We may be getting two more of those. We may be getting a BMS board, a variable message system to supplement what we currently have in place here, in addition to a sandbagger unit, some sandbags. So that is stuff that we will not have to pay for, that has been allocated to us through this grant program. It will be under our local control, deployable elsewhere to other counties, anywhere in the county, as long as it's for an official purpose. And of course, there's always the potential the state might need it somewhere else. But they're basically trying to preposition all these resources so they're not moving at all the way across the state. And we can continue to use it for official purposes. Remember that, how it's a sandbagger down, saying, we can put that wherever you'd like. So, but once all the stuff comes, we will give you an update on exactly what we have. I'm not sure if the whole grant funding is to have anything in place relative to this, because they're just in the early process of procuring it now. So basically, the state's gonna buy it all and turn it over to us to operate with with the understanding that if we don't take care of it, we're not using it, that they certainly could take it and use it somewhere else. But we're happy to have the help and not have the generators, and if I didn't mention that, we'll be getting a couple more small generators, which in terms of this, we look at the Whitehall thing. Things that came that, you know, are other things to keep in mind when you have no water, you have no toilets in the majority of the time. So we're having to bring in toilet units. It was very cold towards the end of this. So while there were some porta potties, there was also, the village actually procured one of those or two of those toilet trailers that require power to operate, which don't come with the generator. So I believe we had generators that were able to use to it brought to light a lot of things that in normal circumstances, you don't think about. In a situation like this, most of the time when we're opening a shelter, you don't have power. You know, or you're able to go to an area which does have power. You don't really take into account what you do when you have no water and we're waiting for water to come. But the first ship that bottled water went in record time. And we went through ten pallets of water in like four hours, five hours, it was gone. So luckily, that supply continued. You know, there was some costs incurred on the village's end to buy water, pay for the restroom trailers, those kind of things. But definitely good topics of discussion. I'm sorry, one more thing. It's not gonna cost any money though. Anybody who's going to ISAC, the emergency management training this year, is on the twenty-sixth. And that's really for the chief elected officials. So the chairman, the vice chairman, it's ten to three. I think anybody can go though. You can register. And you have to pre-register by February tenth. And I will not be teaching this year, so. It'll be somebody else.
And that a lot.
Sorry about that.
You had a lot of good days.
Anything more for Tim? Anything more for the committee?